Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions or changes to this evening's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a request for a discussion item under Committee and Board Reports for the Ambulance Board.
Thank you, Katie. We'll put that under Reports. Any others?
One other change, Mayor. The update for 206 West Adams, the property owner was not able to be here tonight, so we'd like to move that to next, Counsel.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Counsel, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the June 13th Council Meeting. We have Library Board minutes in your packet. We have approval of June 17th payroll of $108,483.47. We have the May Finance Report. We have a salary resolution for city employees. This is going into the next fiscal year. You know, the city employees received a 1% salary increase. This lists all of those specific amounts and increases at 1%. We have a resolution of employment in the Police Department, a communicator, and some part-time summer help for Park and Recreation. We have resolution of cigarette licenses. We have approval of liquor licenses for Torino's, Casey's General Store, Best Western, Fairfield, and Shokai, and claims in the amount of $213,158.76. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, do we have a way of tracking which Casey's?
Yeah, there's usually a number. Joy, do you know which license we're approving here?
Yeah, I can't remember which one it is, but it does, on the actual application, it does say.
It does say which one?
It does. It says south or west.
Do you have an issue with either one of those?
Just want to make sure we could track it.
Generally, we do.
Oh, yeah, we can track it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our public appearances. We have representatives from Fairfest here tonight. If you'll come and join us at the Counsel has a copy of the maps that you provided, so go ahead.
Yep. Hello, everyone. We're back. And the last three years, at this point in time, we would be done with Fairfest, and the summer would be mine, but it's not.
That's right.
So, we have moved to Labor Day this year for weather reasons. I don't know if you remember, last year, we had a designated tornado come right through at our Saturday night headliner, so that was a little inconvenient, but made for some great moments. But we are here again, in front of you this year, to ask for some road closures, extended times in the evening for playing, because we've put together some musicians from all over the country who come every year, who really love Fairfield. They love Fairfest, and so they come for almost nothing. And so, we have some bands that would like to perform after our headliners, which will run us a little bit later, particularly with Buddy Guy and with Marty Stewart on Saturday night. And we're looking for an extended road closure because we are fencing this year, because we are a ticketed event. So, we would like to be able to move our stage back a little farther into Hempstead and Main, and then we'll be fencing that whole area. So, we're asking for that closure, which is new this year. But basically, everything is the same as last year in terms of road closure. But we'll just be fencing, and just the look of it will be different.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? So, we did close Hempstead last year.
No, we did not.
There were barricades on Hempstead?
Yes, that's right.
It was a soft closure, but it wasn't... This year would be more of a hard closure.
Okay. It does eliminate some of the parking for downtown, but you're not going to get people too, too close as it is.
It would eliminate some parking, but, you know, we did have to park some semis back there anyway, so maybe...
Hempstead is whatever you're referring to. There's a good parking.
Yes.
East of Main Street.
Correct.
But I'm sure you know that. That's fine.
Chief, do you have any... Have you seen this? Do you have any comments?
No, we spoke about it in the meeting earlier, so I don't have any issues with it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety and Transportation Committee has now met twice with our Fairfest representatives, and specifically, they've come to us with the request for extended hours. The layout changing slightly. We do, we was concerned over blocking the county attorney's office, the front entrance to that. We have spoken. Chief Thomas has spoken to him, and he is okay with that.
Okay.
For the two days requested. We've spoken to them about barricades and fencing, proposed street closures, and then use of local parks for camping due to lack of rooms available in our community. And we've encouraged them to work closely with Park and Rec on that.
Okay, thank you. So, your committee, did you take any action? Did you pass the proposed... If not, if it was just discussion, that's fine. We'll just...
It was just a discussion, but they brought back everything that we had requested at our last meeting, and we are all in full support of what the details they brought forth tonight.
And the extended hours for music would be 1:00, 2:00 on Friday, Saturday, and
Probably not Sunday night.
In fact, for sure, it's really Friday, too.
Yeah. And it's possible that we won't run that late, but once the headliner ends at around 10:30 or so, it takes a half an hour to set up again. So, we would like a little bit of buffer on the late end. It's really just what we're looking for.
Okay. Do we generally get... No, I know we've had events in the square go to midnight. I'm just wondering, during those events, did we receive complaints at City Hall, say, during or following day? Do you know if there's any record of that calling?
I would have to check.
Okay. All right, then, if there's any other discussion?
I have a question. I know you're fencing the entire area in, and I know that you have areas for safe havens if there's storms or something like that.
Liberation areas.
But two of them are outside of the fenced-in area. And is the only way in and out your entrance gate? I mean, if something happens, people are going to go down.
That's a very good question, sure.
You know, and they're going to run into those fences, and there's going to be no way to get out.
Well, on east and west of Briggs, we need to have easy access, so Scott feels comfortable in case there's an emergency, so we would probably have some pretty easy gating on those sides.
Okay. You'll have people there watching those all the time?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that'll be kind of similar up there on Hempstead, on both ends of that, or is that going to be such that...
We can. Yeah, because, you know, we'll have musicians' buses and vans coming in to drop off equipment, so that would have to be easy entry and exit as well.
Okay. And then, the Beer Garden area, that isn't going to get the Memorial Monument involved in it?
No.
It's going to be out around it, right?
It's... In my last communication with our Beverage Garden Committee, they're just going to have the Beverage Garden on the parking lot area.
Oh, so it won't be the entire blue area?
Correct. That is different now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right.
So, and taking into consideration Memorial as part of that decision?
Yeah, and I think that's a great memorial, and I wouldn't want to see anything happen to it, so...
Yeah, agreed.
I think that's about all I really had. I was concerned with people being able to leave either end of Briggs in an emergency situation, you know, in order to be able to get them to there without having to have everybody that may be in there just go straight south on Main Street.
You know, the main entrance will be on Main, but both Briggs and Hempstead will be soft. You know, not barricades like last year, but fencing that we have to be able to move in and out for our own utilization with the trucks.
Right.
So, an emergency situation deal.
Yeah, and I don't know if you remember, last year, we did have an emergency situation.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Thousands of people were in the dark in the Civic Center, playing music. It was actually pretty special, but it worked. So, hopefully, we'll have more people.
Well, hopefully.
Yeah.
What time are your main acts going to be finishing, do you think, on the main nights?
Yeah, padding with encores and such, probably 10:30.
I'm concerned with the 1:00. I have to be honest with you.
Sure.
I think that would be pretty unexpected within the community.
Okay.
You know, if this were announced ahead of time, and there were a public hearing, you might get some neighborhood people showing up, and, you know, with a concern. You know, and not just the nearby neighborhood, but, you know, sound does travel.
Sure.
And maybe people think it's a great, you know, joyful opportunity, but does anybody else feel the same way?
You know, I think, as I say, I think as long as, you know, it's within that timeframe, that it shouldn't be a problem.
You think 1:00 is all right, you're saying? You do. I know one time in a recent... I don't know if it was you guys, but we approved later with acoustical only after a certain hour.
I think that was us. I mean, you've approved midnight every year.
Yeah.
Right.
But I do remember maybe going later than... I remember at some point, that was a suggestion. Did that work for you or not? Not really? Not the kind of music they have, right?
Yeah, but acoustic is going to be amplified at the main stage, so...
Well, the other question I have is if you are correct in what you stated, that your main act for the evening usually is the last act, right? And if they're offstage by 10:30, quarter till 11:00, is there need for a 1:00 with music or not? That's my question.
Well, the headliner is finishing by roughly 10:30, but then, since we've gathered all-star musicians from all over the country, they then wanted to... Just as we're doing after-parties at all the local venues, driving people to, you know, five or six venues in town and businesses, this is the first year we were going to actually allow people, because again, these are fairly famous musicians, to do an after-party on the main stage, which is...
With the headliner.
Improvisation. So, the headliner will stay, people will join them. It's not a set the way the headliner does. It's pure improvisation. So, if they played for an hour theoretically, if we get them started at 11:00, they're going to finish at 12:00. I just want to make sure that no... You know, the only reason we're asking for one, I don't think the musical will go till 1:00.
Okay, well, I wasn't understanding.
We just didn't want a 12:15 to run into a, you know, a problem from a rake of...
That's fair.
Yeah, because I want to be respectful. I mean, I made calls late at night, like, turn up the music.
It's not our intention to keep it going till 1:00.
Okay, very good. All right, Counsel, so entertain a motion to approve the plan presented by Fairfest.
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Revulinski.
One quick question. I can't tell on your map. The property at the corner of Briggs and Main, I think it's 123 East Briggs, the one that's...
Luckman's?
Yeah, right by Luckman's.
Yeah.
Did you leave room for them to get in and out outside of your fence?
Yes, yes. No, we're going to definitely... People who live there or, you know, have business will certainly be allowed to come and go, and they'll have special wristbands and things like that. Yeah, we don't want to be restrictive.
Great. Well, thanks. You've got another great event organized. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to our action items and ordinances. First is, I think that we had a discussion with Counsel on a presentation, expense reduction services, so this would be a consideration of a contract. Mike, if you bring us up to speed on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, approximately a month and a half ago, this idea was presented to the Ways and Means Committee. Other communities, Burlington and West Burlington, have hired Brenda Huddelson. She owns her own company, Expense Reduction Services. And on the way through, Brenda stopped and talked to me about the concept, and that's where we really got started with the idea. We then presented the idea to Ways and Means Committee, and essentially, what Brenda does is she comes in and she looks at our accounts payable records, and she goes through all of the vendors that we pay money to as a city of Fairfield, and she finds areas where she believes we can save money. So, whether that's bundling our, you know, our office equipment purchases, or finding utility accounts that have zero usage on them that could be shut down, those types of things. And we pay Brenda based on the savings that she finds, and we implement. So, in other words, one of the deliverables that Brenda will give us is a list of areas of potential savings. We, as a city, then get to choose which areas of those, which areas we want to implement. Of the areas we implement, we pay Brenda half of the savings over the course of two years. And we pay savings to her once we realize those savings quarterly, for savings that we realize over time. So, of the ideas that we choose not to implement, we're restricted from implementing those for two years. In other words, we can't have Brenda come in, give us a bunch of ideas, take her ideas, and then implement our own after she leaves town. So, in a nutshell, that's how the contract works. I would open up for any questions that you might have. Ways and Means did consider this. Department heads have reviewed it and discussed it. They're comfortable with it, and Ways and Means did unanimously recommend it to Counsel for approval.
Did you get to speak to the cities that she's worked with?
I did. I spoke with the city administrator and finance director in Burlington, and also Dan Gifford in West Burlington. Burlington was very pleased with her service. In fact, they're planning to bring her back and have her do it every five years. That's just sort of a routine expense audit.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Tom, any comments from Ways and Means?
No, then I did meet... We had a Ways and Means Committee meeting before the first time that we had those. But then, I did, I attended one of the department head meetings that Mike had, and we did talk to the department heads. And once they understood what was happening with this, how it could work, I mean, they were in...
Helps them, too.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Okay, very good. So, then, are there any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the contract proposed.
Still move.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next, Counsel, we have consideration of our budget amendment for 2016 as we approach the end of our fiscal year. And Joy, I'd like you to talk about the form that we have to present to the state.
Yes, it's been published in the paper. We're only changing two activities. One's the public works. We paid for... We had excess money in our road use tax fund, and we paid for, I believe, Highland. So, I'm adjusting it by $107,000. And also, we refinanced some old debt and brought in some new debt for the 1.9 that we borrowed. So, that's money just coming in and then money going right back out, but you still have to adjust it.
Right, you have to show that amendment on the audit.
Yeah. So, that's what the two changes are.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Joy or Mike on the budget amendment? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Still move.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Thompson. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of a no-parking sign on a portion of Southview Drive. And this came out of public safety. Katie?
Public Safety and Transportation met prior to the previous council meeting, and were asked to consider placing no-parking signs on both the north and south side of Southview Drive within 60 feet, I think it is, 60 yards, 60 feet.
Feet.
60 feet of the corner, so that nobody can park on either side.
The corner with Liberty?
The corner with Liberty Drive, correct.
Okay, and this came as a recommendation out of the committee to approve?
Yes, the committee voted for it.
Okay. Then, would you like to make that a motion to approve? You would not.
I would not.
Is there a motion to approve?
I was on the committee. I didn't have a problem with it. I mean, if there are people from the community who wanted to talk about it, I would like that, but we could have a motion and second first.
Okay. So, motion by Revulinski to approve the request for no parking. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Flornoy. Any discussion, Counsel?
Just like to know why.
Any public comment?
Yeah, I had a lot of public comment about that, because it's near where I live.
Okay, so go ahead.
What's going on is a business is operating out of a residential location near there, and their workers are parking at that intersection. It makes it very difficult for people to turn off a Liberty Drive on the Southview Drive if there's somebody parked right next to the intersection there on either side of the street. So, the neighbors came to me and asked me if I would bring that to the Safety Committee meeting to ask for that no-parking area. So, a compromise is kind of reached. The neighbors wanted no parking on the south side of Southview Drive from Liberty Drive to Woodside Circle. And the committee didn't feel that that was the way to go with it. I know Katie wasn't in favor of it, but again, it's posed a problem since that business has been there in that residential home. And it has caused problems for the neighbors to come around the corner there and not being able to have room to even pull off of Liberty Drive until somebody pulls out and away from that location, so...
Okay. Any other concerns? Katie, what was your concern?
I just, I went down and maneuvered it with my own vehicle and called somebody in with a secondary vehicle, and we had a width of three vehicles across there, two of which were full-size SUVs, and we had no problem maneuvering it.
Okay. Okay. So, is... We have a motion and a second? Okay, so any other discussion? Not pleased, call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay.
Hallie?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I crossed off too many already, so motion passes 6-1. All right, Counsel, then, we will move to a development agreement under consideration for a project at 106 South Maple Street. I believe one of the developers here... Josh, will you speak to that, please?
I'm asking the board, or the board, the Counsel for a letter of support to apply for the workforce housing tax credit. I'd like to construct a triplex at that location. I submitted the current square footage plans to Rebecca about two units at 1165 and one unit at 636 square feet. It would be a two-story unit, and we'd just like to add to, or like to help with the quality housing stock need here in Fairfield. So, that's the idea, is to improve the neighborhood and hopefully provide some quality housing here in Fairfield.
Thank you.
A question. Is there off-street parking going to be provided for those residents there?
Yep, there would be at least two parking spots for a unit.
For a triplex?
For a triplex. It's a half-acre lot. It's .5 acres.
Only two parking places for a triplex that would be off the street?
Per unit.
Per unit?
Per unit, yes, per unit. And there is room for six. We do not plan to ask for any variances. It is a narrow lot, but the current plans, there's no need for variances. The setbacks look to be fine, so everything looks...
Josh, tell us about the workforce housing tax incentive program.
So, the state of Iowa provides tax credits if you build multifamily units, meaning anything greater than a duplex. So, if you have a minimum of a triplex, you can get up to $15,000 per unit constructed in tax credits to construct that property. Also, the state of Iowa, the workforce housing tax credit will rebate you all sales tax occurred during the construction process to help stimulate housing development here in Highland.
Okay. Is your development contingent on receiving a positive reward? Will you not develop if you do not receive the award?
So, if we do not receive the award, the project won't be, you know, we won't be able to do it. It's absolutely needed, and also, the intent to use the 10-year tax abatement for multifamily would also be intended in the future.
Is it competitive, and/or do you anticipate that it's pretty much, if you're developing what qualifies, you'll receive those tax credits?
So, currently, it's, everybody has been approved. There's a little bit of delay on the tax credits. It won't slow our process, when they distribute the tax credits. It won't delay our project due to our financing package, so we'll be able to proceed with the project as long as we're granted the tax credits within the workforce housing tax credit program.
Yeah. Is this going to be rental housing?
Yes.
And what do you foresee as the rent going to be on the different units?
We haven't solidified that. They're definitely going to be upper-end units, somewhere between 700 and 900 per unit for the larger units. They're going to be two-bedroom, one bath right now. One unit will be one-bedroom, one bath. That one might be in the 600 range.
Can you describe the area where you're looking to develop?
106 South Maple is one block off of Burlington to the south, on the east side of Maple. There's currently a one-story home there, built in 1900, or somewhere around there, and there's a two-and-a-half car, three-and-a-half car garage on the property, all of which will probably go away. And, yeah, hopefully be able to construct something nicely. It's a half-acre lot, so plenty of room for parking. Yeah, decent neighborhood. And the neighbors care about the neighborhood also. I've had some interactions with the neighbors, and I think they're looking for some improvement in the neighborhood. There's been some concern about some existing houses directly adjacent, so...
Okay, thank you.
Has this been approved? Has this run through planning and zoning at this point or not? I guess, because I'm not familiar. Maybe I didn't know if it occurred prior to when.
I don't think it needs to.
Oh, okay.
It would need to, but in order to apply for the workforce housing tax credit, I need a letter of support from the city, saying that the city supports the project with the intent of using the 10-year tax abatement for the multifamily unit.
Okay.
That's part of the, part of the financial structure that they look at, the state of Iowa. So, the letter of support comes first, and then financing, and then apply for the workforce housing tax credit.
Did you ever comment?
No, as long as they're meeting the current zoning requirements, and they're not asking for a variance, it won't need to run through planning and zoning. We'll look at it from the building permit standpoint, from the site layout and footprint standpoint, but it won't need to get planning and zoning approval.
Okay. Right, that neighborhood's zoned R2.
It's split down Maple. The west side is R3, the east side is R2.
Okay, well, R2 includes multifamily, triplex-type development.
Duplex.
Duplex.
Duplex, right.
So, you would need a variance to be there.
No.
It's an R3. It's currently zoned R3, so we won't be asking for rezoning or any variances.
So, is your lot on the west side of the road?
Yes.
Okay, because you were saying east.
Yeah, I thought you were saying east.
Yeah, because it's on the west side of the road, you will not need a variance. That's correct.
Okay. So, Counsel, the first order of business, then, is a resolution that would be used...
There's some of us that would like to speak on this.
Okay, so, this is not set up as a public hearing, but I understand, so we'll entertain a few of you. We'll be brief, and if someone else makes your point, then just move that on. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just learned about this at 5:15 tonight, so I've tried to throw together some thoughts. My husband and my son and I have lived at 104 South Maple, directly adjacent, for the past almost 20 years. And this property is an L shape that goes around behind our yard. The, there's some streets that don't go through, so when we moved in there, there's a big open space on our block between Adams and Burlington and Maple and where Washington Street dead ends. So, part of the charm of the neighborhood has always been this large, open space where people garden, children play ball, bicycles can go through. There's never been, you know, fencing, or it's been a very open neighborhood as far as that goes. My mother also lives down the street, three doors away, so she's just two doors from this property. So, we moved to this location, and we really loved living there for the character of the neighborhood. I would characterize it this way, single-family houses up and down the block, regardless of the zoning. I was shocked... I was shocked to find out how we were zoned, with a large, open space behind the yards. While some of the houses in our block are in sore need of some TLC, we remain a friendly and neighborly community. In recent months, neighbors have shoveled woks for each other in winter, helped neighbors start dead batteries on their cars, taken a neighbor to the ER, watched the neighbor's dogs, and found live-in help for a new resident down the street. Yes, 106 is a rundown house, but it was also home to a family before they lost it in a tax sale. Yes, they had their share of health and financial problems, especially after the dad passed away. But Lisa was a good mom who saved us when bats got into my mother's house and came to her rescue when she fell last winter. And her son is growing into a responsible, nice young man. This has felt like a hostile takeover from the start. We've been kept in the dark about when we acquired about, inquired about the plans and were simply told, "We think you'll like our plans," but we were never asked what we wanted nor told what the plans were. A triplex is out of character with this neighborhood. Our aging sewer and water infrastructure is barely adequate as it is. Several houses have experienced sewer backups into their basements. It seems like a bad idea to shoehorn three households into this space, particularly when there are plenty of other building sites available in town that are more appropriate for apartments. The present plan seems to have sprung up as an afterthought from someone's bad business decision. Perhaps they expected they would gain financially by acquiring this property only to find out they had bought a lemon. Let's not reward a bad business decision with a tax cut. I urge you to vote no to this resolution. And pardon, I'm, public speaking is not on my list.
You did a great job, Carol.
So, I throw this together, but I, I really feel, especially when public funds are involved, that there should always be outreach to neighbors before you go into planning. And we've had this lesson come up, I think with Heartland Grain Co-op, with the Tenko House, with the development on East Adams, which was originally proposed. I wish people would reach out to the neighbors, and I feel like this, this is something missing in our planning, to find out what the neighbors want. We do not want a triplex on our street. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marsha Ann Roth. I'm at 201 South Maple. I'm across the street from the Purple House. Okay? I have a few questions and it, I've already inferred that there is no zoning that will have to be looked at. But I want to know where neighborhood assessments are, where the neighborhood impact studies are, where the neighborhood interviews are. And as she said, these are all single-family homes. This is, you know, my mom and I live in one house, she lives in one house, her mom lives in one house. Um, the sewer and water impact, you're going to have to look at this because right now the area is 30% unoccupied. We have limited pressure, there's lead in the lines, and this system could not handle three households more. You're looking at a street redo that, because it's just falling apart, where traffic studies and the impact of the, the traffic of all of these extra cars. Washington Street, as she said, there's a section of it, it's about a two-block at-long area, that the easement is there. And then it comes across Maple and we have one block of it. Is that going away? Has it, has the zoning been abandoned on that? Where are they going to park these six cars? Because they can't do it facing north-south. I don't see where they're going to park, well, actually, yeah, six cars. So, did the zoning abandon that or are they going to? Okay. Right now, we've already had a property value drop, massive. Uh, property values have dropped from 189 when Tenko bought that house. And there's a house, well, both sides of Tenko sold for 130. There's a house that's on the market and has been and can't get any offers at 115. If you put multiple housing into that area, you are looking at drastic, and I don't think any of them, any of us have gone to the tax assessor's office, but when they do, you're looking at a whole neighborhood of reduced taxation. So, and there are a couple of properties that if you do this multiple housing on this property, it opens up three more that we could see that would do the same thing. And I personally don't want to live in a multiple-family housing area. I don't want to live in a rental area. All but one of these houses in the area are owned. So, I, I'd like you to keep that in mind while you're talking about a 10-year abatement on taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a former owner of 106 South Maple. When I talked to Beverly, her words to me were, "Oh, honey, I don't want your house, I just want my money." I can't hear you. What I said was that when I first spoke to you on the phone, your words to me were, "Oh, I don't want your house, honey, I just want my money." Then Joshua Lera became into it and suddenly you wanted the house.
Can you, can you speak to the counsel about your objection?
Yes. My objection is just that...
This isn't a place to be personal?
This is not, I understand, except that it should be taken into account how they acquired the property. Because they made a family homeless. And if you look at the Fairfield economic development, it talks about making affordable housing for families. That house was very affordable to me because I owned it outright. When my husband died, I went through a massive depression. And yes, it's my fault that I lost it, but it should be taken into the account how they acquired the property. They did not buy it outright in an honest and ethical way. They got it at a tax sale. According to my lawyer, he's never seen anything like it happen where the actual owner still wanted the property, but it did in this case.
Okay. But the, but a tax sale, there, but there's, there are, there are, there could be multiple bidders at a tax sale. Were there other bids?
Beverly Sprague bought the taxes. Beverly Sprague sent me a notice about it. I took the notice to the courthouse because the amount that she said I owed and the amount that I knew I owed were different. And I asked the clerk, "Is this correct because I know I am more than that?" And she said, "No, it isn't." And I said, "Well, does it constitute a legal thing?" She said, "No, it doesn't." Now, my bad. I asked a clerk for a legal opinion. I realize that.
Okay.
But that's how I lost the property.
So, the picture's clear. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, please. Do you...
I, I live 205 South Maple and...
And your name, sir?
Jason Taylor.
Okay.
Um, I like the character of our neighborhood as it is. I, I'm not terribly thrilled about the, the possible turnover of a multifamily dwelling. That's one concern. The other concern is at the corner of, I think, Adams and Maple, my neighbor who bought the, the old hospital, office clinic, uh, last year, his sewer line collapsed and they had to dig 25 feet down to repair it, and it cost him $15,000. And I heard from him, direct quotes from Crossiron, saying, "They didn't know they could, they could connect because it was so fragile." I don't, I put a lot of money into my house since I purchased it. I want my property value to stay where it is or increase. And I can't guarantee that if this starts being turned into more and more rental properties, more and more multifamily dwellings. And, uh, so, that's basically all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, can you speak to the, to the sewer issue in that part of the city? Is there anything that you...
Yes, Mayor. We know we have several grade-five defects on that sewer line. In fact, we just replaced a significant portion of that line recently, and I believe the street has been repaired. But we, we did have some aging, we still do have some aging infrastructure in that particular area. We're trying to, to repair it as the budget allows, piece by piece.
But if there was, but if it was...
Nothing's been done on Maple.
Nothing on Maple, on Adams.
On Adams, yes, but nothing on Maple.
That's correct.
Right. I just also want to correct, Marsha, I don't know where your statement about lead in the water lines, I'd rather that not be out in the public because that's just not true. Um, you know, our, our water superintendent, you know, has, has gone on record to tell us that they, you know, that we don't have those within our system. There may occasionally be a lead line coming out of a home, which is the homeowner's responsibility. But even as we replace pipes, there could be lead solder that was used years and years ago, but much of that has been replaced. Our lead count in our water is extremely low. So, I just want to correct you on that one because that's a dangerous statement these days, given what happened in Flint, Michigan. Yes? Josh, go ahead.
I just want to, you know, let all the citizens know that, that voice their concerns, that I definitely hear them. Uh, we are taking into consideration the aesthetics and we, our plant, current plans are to fit the aesthetics into the current neighborhood. And these are going to be higher rents, so the intent is to have a, a high-quality tenant. It'll be locally managed and, and it'll probably be the highest-valued house on the street, to be honest. So, in concerns of lowering the value of the homes, the assessment will be probably higher than any home on, on South Maple in the first 100 and 200 blocks. And we're not asking for, again, rezoning, we're not asking for any variances at this time.
Thank you.
Mike, could you explain a little bit about the tax increment that would be on this? This isn't 100% tax rebate for 10 full years or tax abatement for 10 full years. It's a, it's an incremental type abatement, right?
That's correct. So, the current base value of the property will be frozen upon application to the county, and then the new assessed value, that increment, the difference between the base and the new value is what is abated. That's correct.
But that's done on a, on a sliding scale over the 10-year period, correct? It's not that entire amount for the entire 10-year term?
It's the entire amount.
Come on.
Yeah. It's the entire...
Change a little bit.
All of the property tax on the increment for 10 years. The developer will not pay property tax on the increment, the new assessed value.
Okay. And then that differs from what our current tax abatement policy is. We're only offering this or would support it just because we need more development like this in town, correct?
Correct. The council passed amendment number two to our urban revitalization plan that added this 100% exemption for three shared units under one roof or more.
Under one roof.
Under one roof, correct. Correct.
Counsel, any, any, any other discussion points? Any response to neighbors? This is a tough situation. This is a legal development that's being proposed. It's, it's just, you know, neighbor, the neighbor's concerns are honest and valuable, but this is a tough situation for us because we're...
Well, and I think the other thing too is when you're talking about a two-level, you know, in other words, I think most of the homes are definitely not in that area in size. And so, it could be kind of unwieldy-looking. I mean, I don't know, when you're talking about, obviously, sort of a stack type of thing, that, you know, in other words, it's not going to really fit into the neighborhood, I guess is what I'm thinking.
I didn't bring a picture with me, and I could share that with the council. Actually, it, it kind of has a colonial look on the front facade. Uh, so, there are two longer, narrow units, and then there's a third one-level unit in the back.
But it will be a two-level?
Two-level, um, but one entrance for one duplex, um, one entrance to the right for the second, not duplex, but the second unit, and then there'll be a rear unit, is the current plans. Aesthetically...
And you said all off-street parking?
All off-street parking. Again, I'm not asking for any variances, any concerns. This is in an R3 district, which is zoned for multifamily, meaning greater than duplex. And again, it's just to improve the neighborhood. Carol, Marcia, I believe, both I had contact with early on, back in January, when they noticed there was a transition in the property, and they both had hopes for improvement, not necessarily in multifamily, but they wanted aesthetic improvement in the neighborhood. And there was, there was some relief that there was hopes for the future, that somebody might do something positive. There was also concern that it would remain as it is from both Carol and Marcia. Is it Marcia?
Marsha.
Marcia, I'm sorry. So, there was concern that, that a poor landlord or property owner would just retain it. Both of them communicated this to me, that there was some concern, but there was also hope from both of us, the folks who spoke today. So, again, it's just to improve, you know, with intent to improve the neighborhood and not to create a, in any poor of a situation than what's currently there. There are two-story level homes all, on that street. There's four or five on that street.
What's the total square footage of the building?
Uh, currently, 2,966 for all three units.
You say they're on that street? You mean those two blocks that you talked about earlier?
Yeah, there's one way across the street.
So, yours is larger?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what Carol feels.
So, it shouldn't, so if there's a three...
Next door is at least 2,500.
Right. So, it is within the same size range as the houses on the block. It's not...
Footprint would be smaller. It's a two-story building.
No, I understand. Yeah. We're, we're talking about the aesthetics first of all, but...
I guess, is there a basis to...
Won't the footprint be smaller since it's a two-story?
The footprint currently is planned 32 by 66 underground.
It's about the same size of other homes in that neighborhood, it sounds like.
I, I would say to the neighbors that I, I do sympathize with you. I live in North Campus Village and my whole side yard has been bulldozed and we have streets going in and all, you know, all the beautiful kind of pastage that I've been enjoying and out my, from my living room window is now going to be a little urban, suburban community. And, and it's shocking, you know, change is shocking. But, but really, from what we've heard here, I mean, as a council, there's nothing really that's controversial about this proposal. The fact that it's three families is something that's already on our books. It's perfectly legal. And so, if you, you know, if you really want it to be in a one-family community, you know, I mean, you, that's something you have to look at when you, when you move in, or you could bring it to the council and to say, "No, we want to change our zoning here," or something. You could bring it to planning and zoning. But the fact that it is, it is a three, it is zoned R3, so they're not doing anything that's illegal or out of the already-approved, that's not already-approved. So, I, I feel, you know, change is always difficult, but when we look at the picture of that house in question on, on the map here, we see on the assessor's site, it's not, I mean, you know, it's not exactly a, a, you know, huge gem of, of a house from the looks of it compared to some of the other homes on that street.
We all understand that.
Yeah. And so, I, you know, I guess what I'm saying, and I'm just trying to make you feel a little better by saying, you know, in time, you're going to, you're going to just get used to it, and you're going to say, "Really? It doesn't look so bad?" And, and these people are paying pretty good rent. It's not like, you know...
All right. So, just one, one final comment. We've listened to everybody. Come up to the microphone, Carol. Yeah.
I have, I have concerns about the large trees. Our backyard has large trees and behind us, there are large shade trees and it will, you know, they're, they're very valuable to our property. And I don't see how you're going to shoehorn this thing in with six parking spaces without damaging those trees. There's a, a large, a pin oak pine, there's at least two big trees.
Okay, Carol.
So, I, I would like to see how they're going to fit everything that they're saying onto that property, because as I say, it's an L shape and part of it's behind our yard. I have no idea.
Do the trees cross the property line?
Uh, yes, actually, the roots, yes. They're right.
Technically, if they cross the property line, I think that he can cut them off if he wants to. Because you've got to take care of that tree. It's on your property.
Is that something that...
I'm not saying he's going to do that, but...
Some are on our property and some are in the...
Yeah. I'm just saying, if it crosses the property line, I mean, that's, you know, you've got to take care of that.
The ones that are on his property are his trees. I mean, this is just how it works.
If it carries over the property line, that's your responsibility to take care of.
So, if the root system gets damaged, that's...
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, but I mean, that's...
That's how it works here.
That's how it works in the world. I mean, everywhere it works that way.
And counsel, the, the other option is just to leave the existing house there, which is in poor condition. Uh, nobody is currently occupying the space. is in poor condition. Nobody is currently occupying the space, and, and, you know, that's the other option, is to leave the existing home there, which is probably bringing down the value of the current neighborhood. And I think that the neighbors probably agree with that, that it's not helping their property values with the existing structures on the property in the current condition.
Okay. All right, we'll end this, we're going to end the discussion here. Thank you, thank you all, and it, again, this is, I appreciate the fact that there, what, there isn't a lot of notice about exactly what this is. You know, private development is something that, you know, we're a market-based community, we are open for that, we have our, our city zoned in a way to accommodate different styles of homes. This does fall into an R3. It's, it, it is just something that by law, you know, we, we have to allow. It's not something that was newly created, it's something that's been there for a while. So, it puts, you know, puts us in a position to have to follow the law, but at the same time, I hope that the developers, having heard the arguments from the neighbors, will do everything they can with the property to keep the integrity of the neighborhood intact.
Was it zoned R3 because of the hospital that used to be there?
I can't answer that question. It is R3 at this point in time, and as John said, if there was an interest in the neighbors to have, to change that zoning to preempt something like this coming, it has to be done long before this. So, I'd ask-
We have no idea until February it was zoned.
Okay. I'm going to ask for any word from the council. Is there an interest or a motion to-
I would move for approval of the request.
So, the first is the resolution, and that is essentially to be part of the application process, so you'd be entering into a, approving a resolution for this particular project. So, move by Revolinski, is there a second?
Also, I could do-
Second by Flornoy.
One request, in the future, could we get a site plan at least of, just so we have an idea what's, what's being proposed? I mean, verbal description's one thing, but I would like to see, I'm a visual guy, I'd like to see a map, and see how it fits in.
I agree with that.
Like to see where the parking is, like to see the facade, and then share it with the neighbors ahead of time.
Correction, isn't the resolution not about whether to build it, but whether to give them a tax?
No, it is, Carol, it is not. Please, Carol, it's not, and I'm going to have to ask you not to speak out unless you're asked to speak. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion, counsel? If not, please call the roll.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
No.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes 6-1. Next council will be a resolution, consideration to provide support for the workhouse hazard incentive application, which is the tax incentive for a 10-year period of time.
This is only on the improved valuation after it's been built?
Okay. Sorry, so this is, this is, I'm being corrected, this is for the sales tax credit. I'm sorry, Doug, your question, I was-
Well, when you said that, I said that's only on the improved valuation after it's been built. That was the first one.
Right.
This is only the sales tax.
Correct.
This one here is on the sales tax. He applies to the state for that, we're just offering a letter of support, right?
Correct.
So, I move approval?
Move by Flornoy to approve.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Martha, was yours a yes vote?
I'm, yeah.
You're, okay.
I'm aye.
Okay, so motion passes unanimously. Next council will move to, let's see, we have our second reading of our rezoning requests, and these are three different requests for, one, for the Doyle subdivision and property adjacent to it at 12th and Gere. The first resolution is moving from A1 agricultural to M1 limited manufacturing. So, we'll open this as a public hearing and ask if there's any public comment. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, would you like to?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
The last time we discussed this, there seemed to be some time sensitivity to it, but we didn't want to pass it from the first through the third reading in that meeting. I would like to ask if there is any interest in moving this from the second through the final reading by suspending the rules?
Yeah, I think that was particularly the case with this one, because it was, Adam, that was the, it's the one that's tied to the National Guard.
It's the R2 one that's the most imperative. The National Guard one would be nice, but they're willing to close without the rezoning completed, and this one that's M1, it's fine to go through all three if you'd like.
So, it's the third, the third one.
Okay, then I'll, I'll retract that.
Okay. So, then I'd still entertain a motion to pass from the second to the third reading.
So, move.
Move by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next council would be the zoning from A1 to M2 general manufacturing, and this is the area that's in the middle of that property. Again, that's, this is a public, public hearing is open, is there any discussion? Any? That will close the public hearing, and-
I do have a question.
Yes.
If I may, Adam, you know, I, I just drove by there the other day on the trail, and the area that's to the south of the, of the current trail, that goes, you know, in from, what is that, 12th Street or something, goes west of 12th Street, that woodsy area, is that going to be part of the parking lot, or are there, or is it just the area-
We don't own any of the woods, we only own what's in, currently in Hayfield. That's the house, the house along 12th Street, that's their property. So, there's, no trees would be cut down on this project at all.
And so, in the area right, it's the area just behind the armory is what, what we're talking about as part-
Yeah, due west to those trees.
West of those trees, right. Okay, just want to make that clear in my own mind, what they're talking about.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Hallie, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Okay, thank you. And then this would be the ordinance. Darren, would you make a motion to suspend the rules?
I would make a motion to suspend the rules on this.
Okay, motion by Hamilton.
Second.
Second, second by Anderson.
Do we need the public hearing for it?
Uh, no, we're suspending the rules, and then I'll open it up for the public hearing. So, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Now, we'll enter, we'll open up the public hearing for the rezoning of A1 to R2 general residential. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to pass from the second to the third and final reading, through the third and final reading. So, move by Revolinski, second by Hallie. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have the first reading of our outdoor dining and for downtown establishments. I know this has been in the works for quite some time. I think Darren asked you to give a report from the committee's side about what's in the ordinance and-
Okay, they, this'll take care of my committee report later, because that was the only thing that we had at that particular meeting. We had some finalization of some wording and, and changes that were needed. With the ordinance itself, what we're describing is dining outside within fenced-in areas, not to exceed about half the width of the sidewalk. The dimensions are, are spelled out in here. You cannot restrict the passageway to less than four feet near poles and where fencing would be at if it's the sidewalk dining. The other half of this ordinance is parking stall dining, where a platform would be built within parking stalls, and diners would be served food and alcohol on those platforms. The alcohol service isn't to begin until 5:00 PM in the downtown area, so there won't be any during the lunchtime or anything like that. It has to be within the fenced-in area or on the dining platform. The rules for those areas are spelled out in Iowa code for alcoholic beverages. The responsibility of the business owner is, is to make sure that they have the proper documentation, that they can serve in these areas alcohol, that kind of thing. There, there is good, good language used for how this is going to be policed, as far as it falls under a nuisance ordinance. If there is a problem with not being cleaned up, or defects in dining platforms, or fences get knocked down and don't get put back up, that kind of thing, it becomes a nuisance. And so, we have teeth to be able to go through our nuisance ordinance and able to enforce what's going on in these areas. There's also spelled out in here that you're not able to, or you're not supposed to chain bicycles to these, you're not supposed to tie your dog up to them. Dogs are not allowed in dining areas in, in these locations. It's kind of funny when I say, you know, you can't chain your bicycle to it, and you would think that would be a logical thing, but it's not.
Very practical.
Okay. So, you know, if, if there's damage to the sidewalk from the fencing that's installed, it's the responsibility of the person that put it in to repair it, it doesn't fall back on the city. Liability insurance has to be provided for these areas as proof to the city that they're being covered. There's, there's one amendment to the ordinance that I would like to make as a friendly amendment. In Section 950-030, sidewalk dining requirements, letter C says permits, annual permits are issued for a $50 fee. That should be a section as it is in the permits and fees section in the second part, the outdoor dining area. Now that I read it, it doesn't look the same. Okay. My eyesight's playing tricks on you, maybe it's been corrected, so. That was the only thing that I saw in it.
No, that was, that, what we see in there, Darren, is the platform fee, but not the-
Mike, does that need to be amended slightly?
Do you want to move that to-
Well, there's a section, even, well-
No, under permits and fees.
Permit and fees, yeah.
Yeah, it's not listed as, it does not include the permit fee you just mentioned, which was the annual permit for the sidewalk dining requirement.
Right, the second one should be $250.
Fifty for the platform.
For the platform. Now, there's also, what, if I remember, there's a guarantee of a particular period of time that that, once that permit's issued, it's good for, what, Michael, three years upon renewal?
Yeah, I think they can, yeah, for the dining.
For the, for the outdoor dining, you're guaranteed.
So, it's preference is given, not guaranteed, though?
Right, it's, it's given.
So, if they invest in a platform, they get to at least know they can use it for a few seasons.
Okay. And it costs $250 a year to, to use it, then?
The platform, because you're taking out two parking spaces.
Right.
Yeah, up to, two parking spaces, and only, only three parking stalls can be in use in a one-block area, so say if Cafe Paradiso puts two stalls south to, in front of their building, Georges would only be allowed one. Cafe Amore would only be allowed one.
Okay.
Because those are all in the same block.
Yeah.
But if they put it on the, on broad, on, on, on Main Street, then, then that wouldn't affect, it would be a different street.
But then it would come up against Revelations and Pilas.
Right.
So, yeah, so it sounds like it's going to be a real first conference, if they're interested, yeah. Oh, yeah, is it, is it the same side of the street? That's a good question.
It has to be on the-
If they put it around the corner.
It has to be adjacent to the-
To the property.
Face of the building.
Right.
And in that case, there's two faces to that building.
That's true.
Same with Mohamad's.
Looking at four.
Darren, can I ask you a question about the-
I don't think so. Yes.
About the parklets. The ones that I looked at in Iowa City were to a standard. Are we going to have a standard so that, you know, we're sure that the construction is-
There is a, there is a standard pamphlet that has all of the description of what is approved and what isn't approved, as far as styles of furniture and things like that.
But the platform itself?
Oh, the platform itself, there's some description of that and examples in this outline as well.
But is that going to be, is, are we going to, are we going to review that? Are we going to police that?
Before they, before any, any establishment can have outdoor dining, they have to get a permit for an easement, because our current city code actually doesn't allow anything on the public sidewalks. So, for all these years, we've just been looking the other way. But if an establishment wants to do any outdoor seating, even on the sidewalk, they have to get a permit, and then they have to show there's their plan, and then that gets approved here at City Hall. Same with the platforms.
Okay, so the platform, but, but are we going to have a recommended design?
The guidelines that are referenced in the ordinance
Yeah.
Will be kind of a living document, and it does talk about materials, talks about colors.
Yeah, no, I read, yeah, I did read that, but it, you know, the one in, the one in Iowa City, the, the, they, they were the same. For instance, the, there was a kind of a steel tongue that went from the edge of the platform over the curb, something, you know, very, very strong and stable for, you know, patrons to get from, from there. Are we leaving it wide open, what that connection is going to be, for instance? Is there, is there a, a quality of rail that's-
Terry Baker, do you have the, the guide handy?
Yeah, because we don't have a guy, a copy of the guide along with this ordinance, and I don't think-
What it says in there.
Yeah. Is this the guide? Let's take a look. Well, it's, it's got teeth, though, because the ordinance says these guidelines are law.
So, in other words, I mean, you, you can't just put like, put down some pallets and plywood on top?
No. No, and it has to be, it have, it would have to be ADA compliant as well, which means the slope of that ramp cannot be more than 2%. You can't have it so you step from the sidewalk here up and onto it.
So, next to the last page, and-
Right, I see it, yeah.
Says slip-resistant surface materials.
What you do is, after you pass your ordinance, if they're going to pass it, you adopt a resolution that will accept the guidelines you like. You're also, I think maybe it's in your packages, there's an ordinance to exempt three kinds of dining from the current provisions that restrict all this under 9.48, but you don't consider that until you've decided to adopt the full outdoor dining ordinance, so.
So, the last bullet point, and it just says use high-quality, durable, and aesthetically appealing materials, but does not limit it to metal versus wood at this point.
Yeah, I just know, I, you know, was under the impression from talking with someone at one of the restaurant businesses in Iowa City, when I was looking at the platforms, that the city actually provided the platforms. We made a subsequent call and found out that that wasn't true. But they must have very specific guidelines for materials and for those, those different structural elements. So, it may be, may be worth looking into again, I just think that it would be better if we were-
Right, and, and again, Michael did make the comment that it is a living document at this point in time. Once it does become full ordinance, like our attorney just said, then we need to have it hammered down just a little bit better, I would think.
Thank you. So, any other questions for the committee at this point? If not, entertain a motion to pass the ordinance from the first to the second reading.
So, move.
Second.
Move by Hallie, second by Anderson, and I'm sorry, I don't think I opened this up for as the, as a public hearing yet, so I'll open up at a public hearing at this time. Are there any comments? Now, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Anderson.
Yes.
Brassmanson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Revelinsky.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Darren.
One final comment I would like to make, and, and I've had several calls on this. There's been some, a little bit of confusion, I think, that's gone on. This ordinance does not allow or provide construction for anything in Central Park for dining on it. And I know I've had a lot of people calling me that are very concerned about that. I've tried to make it clear that this ordinance doesn't have anything to do with that at all, so.
Okay, thank you. Next, council will move down to our committee and board reports. Prophecy Committee is complete, so Ways and Means Committee?
Yes, Mayor, we had a meeting Thursday. Several items on the agenda. One of the first ones was on the, just a report by Ruston Lepincott on the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. And it was just a kind of a full-year information-type meeting, giving us an update on some of the issues with the convention center currently, things that may come up at a future time, possibly, but nothing at this point. The second item was the Convention Visitors Bureau, the branding proposal. The CVB had a proposal that they would like the city to be involved to, with the project. They wanted in their budget for $10,000. The proposal that the Ways and Means would like to make to the council is for $7,000.
Great. This is, this is something that Mike and I have discussed, and it's part of a process that started a year ago with the CVB bringing in the assessment team out of Wisconsin to look at the overall tourism strengths and weaknesses of the community. And there were a lot of recommendations that were made, and a lot of those recommendations are elements that the city would have some responsibility for. For instance, wayfinding signage in your main tourism district, so that as people come into the community, they can find the public parking, they can find the museums, or the performing arts centers, whatever it is, as one element of that. Following that, this same company that's proposed contract right now did a workshop here in the fall, a two-day workshop, where they started to get the input from the community for destination branding. Now, destination branding is going to take in a lot of different elements. It's going to take in the elements of tourism, visitors, very specific elements, whether it's art galleries or performing arts centers, but also the overall community and the overall city. So, I think it was an opportunity for us that if we're going to have professional attention on this, that we look at our own brand, and Mike and I have had the discussion about the city's logo, some of the things that'll be coming out of it in terms of color palettes and schemes, and how we tie that into our new signage, how we integrate it into some of our public vehicles, for instance. So, in order to participate in this and to get some of those specific things done, we would have to take, you know, a fair portion of that. The proposal and with that, that was given was $36,000 to do all of that branding work, with about $2,500 designated towards travel, since this company is, is coming from Oregon, so they will be making several trips back and forth over the next four or five months. The CVB has committed to 29,000 of this. The proposal from the city side is 7,000. 1,500 was approved by FIDA today to participate. The chamber is being asked for the other 1,500, so that is how the whole thing is being packaged at this point. And I'd like to invite Ruston, maybe come up and talk with a little bit more specific about what the deliverables are in this contract.
So, thanks, Mayor. So, the first, there's basically four things that this brand strategy, before I get to the deliverables. What do we want Fairfield to be known for? How can Fairfield stand out from the crowd and be more competitive? What thoughts and feelings do we want to come to mind when people are exposed to the name Fairfield? And how can we present Fairfield in a unified, creative, and compelling manner? So, the 10 deliverables that are going to come out of this branding investment, unifying an umbrella to enable the local businesses and marketing partners to be on the same page. Obviously, it's a consultative and well-researched plan. It'll be a presentation of three brand positioning proposals. Competitive identity package, which focuses on the key strengths, the products, the emotional benefits, and the destination promise. As the mayor alluded to, we'll have three different logos to choose from. Visual mockups of marketing materials, shirts, stationary vehicles, wayfinding and signage, keywords and messages to use throughout our community marketing, a style guide, which will allow us to have a unifying text and colored palette, and then an action plan, how to, how to make this all happen in 30 to 90 to three years, so from the beginning to, to a three-year implementation. As, as you've mentioned, Mayor, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has invested about $40,000 to this. So, we're, we believe in this, we're committed to it, and we think it's what will really move our community forward in the, in the branding and the marketing competitive world. We want people to move here, to visit here, to do business here, so we think that this is a good partnership to do this.
It's good, you know, we, we did, I recall, too, the, many of the council members did watch the video series that we saw early, late last summer or last fall by Roger Stone about the 20 ingredients of a successful downtown, and I think that was an inspiring vision of what some of those elements can look like in our downtown. I think the ordinance that we've passed through the first reading tonight is a big part of that also, to upgrade those dining experiences in our downtown. With the facade work, I think, you know, there's, there's something that's, you know, definitely coalescing at this point for us to get the maximum value out of everything that we're doing. This marketing piece, I think, is very important. The other thing is I asked Joy earlier in the week to run the numbers for 2015, 16 fiscal year on our local option sales tax, which, which is a measure of spending within our community. We crossed $900,000 this year. We have total over $900,000 in our local option sales tax fund. So, that's, you know, a very, very healthy, very positive sign in terms of that growth, and that's significant because our highest before that, Joy, was probably 837 or 840, something like that. So, it's a significant growth. It'll come in 910,000 over, so I think these are dollars worth investing. Mike, you know, we had asked you at that meeting to identify where these funds could come from, and your recommendation was reserve in our, in our local option sales tax.
That's correct. That's correct, Mayor.
So, any, any questions, council, for Ruston at this point in terms of the proposal?
Not so much a question, Mayor, but you did mention, since you, you know, we did talk about the source of the funding, and there is, we can use the local option sales tax for this and still be well within our budget guidelines that we had set for that at the begin, at the beginning of the year.
And it really feels like the appropriate place for the funds to come from, because these measures that we're taking are what grow the local option sales tax. So, I had used the term investment. I see this as an investment. I mean, obviously, we could spend $7,000 on a whole number of things within city departments, but when you spend this, the idea is that you get that much more back and more over years. We are, we are really due for new branding. Would you say our branding is getting a little stale? You can quote me on that, Andy.
I move for approval.
A move by Revelinsky to approve the $7,000 as part of the overall branding package.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Okay. Thank you, council.
And we have one more item also.
Yes.
For the Fourth of July celebration, we would like to request $300 for a band as an addition to that. Mr. Hallie did a very good job of convincing us why we need to have that. But there is, the anticipation is that we'd be able to have possibly additional food vendors, additional sales of foodstuffs, that kind of thing, and it'd just be a nice addition, particularly during, during the time that is just prior to the fireworks.
Yeah, the band will play for three hours, so that's $100 per hour. It's actually a pretty good price for three-person bands, 6:45 till about 9:45, but play right up until the fireworks go off. And it should draw a crowd who then eat the food the vendors provide, and the vendors have to pay the city to get their permit, so maybe we'll make it back.
We get some of that.
Yeah, some of it.
Mike, before we approve that, why don't you give your fireworks updates? That's what we're talking about, Fourth of July.
Sure. So, we will shoot fireworks off on the Fourth of July. They'll take place at about dusk. Like Councilmember Hallie said, we'll have a band east of Omaha is the band, and we're actually going to have a company doing it this year, so all of the liability insurance and that type of thing is with the company, it rests with the company. City staff will be out there parking vehicles during the event. We'll be out there around 6:00 PM to start directing traffic and park vehicles, so we hope to have a safe and fun Fourth of July celebration.
And it looks like we've raised somewhere between $3,500 and $4,000 outside of the $1,000 that the city had approved in January through local option sales tax, so we should have a very nice fireworks display. So, entertain a motion to approve the $300 for the band as well?
So, move.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Thank you, Tom. Public safety and transportation.
Public safety and transportation met at 5 o'clock, or at 5:30 this evening. We discussed Fair Fest, which was presented earlier tonight, and we're excited to see how this new model will work this year, and we're trying to be as helpful as possible there. So, you guys have already addressed that. We were presented with a large contingency of citizens who would like us to consider an urban deer hunt. And although great ideas and plenty of pictures of deer to support it in their backyards, we did ask them to put together a little more information, sample ordinances or resolutions in other communities, and kind of present what they would like to see it look like. They will work in conjunction with our police department in putting that together and coming back before the committee again.
Was there a discussion about past where we had tried to implement that during deer season, and we have that ordinance, and all of that information that we've already compiled from all of these people all in one place right now, so?
That was all discussed, yes, and it was also discussed what a flock that was.
Well...
So, we're going to relook at it and hopefully...
There wasn't any interest, it wasn't...
In my backyard.
Other than maybe that it was late in the year when it was approved, but there was plenty of people...
This will be more considered in a, in a more broader ordinance or consideration for what we've implemented if it were to come to council.
But what happened, Captain Smith, we, we got the word out pretty late, and it was a very cold, and it was Christmas season, and...
Yeah, two weekends in between.
It was limited, yeah.
It was over Christmas break. It was a school, basically.
So, as far as, as far as a pilot, it was a weird time and very short notice for people to come out, and it was bow hunting only. They had to, they had to prove their proficiency, they had to be, have the license. We were going to shut off the area well ahead of time and let people know not to come in that area.
It wasn't really designed for success.
It seemed, yeah.
So, we've just urged that group to come back to us with an idea of what they'd like to see, and in addition to that, we are working with the police department on the potential of using sharpshooters for it as well throughout our, our unit here.
The idea being here to implement something that would be real effective in reducing the deer population in the city, that's what we want to accomplish.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Those are the items that were, we, we had one more agenda item, and we ran out of time again, so we still did not discuss right-of-way parking.
So, give us a warning before you bring the new deer proposal to the council, so we can plan for a long evening.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, thank you, Katie, appreciate it. Water Sewer Utilities Committee?
Yes, we had a meeting tonight at 6:00. Only had two items on the agenda. One was for sewer reduction request by Wiley at 805 Liberty Drive, and it was denied because it had been determined by city employees that none of the, all the water had gone down the sewer, and so there was no rebate offered there. And the second item, we're considering, we're voted to amend the existing policy where the city administrator and building clerk have authority to refund up to $100 of sewer billing when the water does go down the sewer, up that amount to $300.
And is that...
And with $300, it has to come to the city to committee for approval.
Over $300.
Anything over $300, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a policy change, and is that, we're going to vote on that as a recommendation or just?
You don't have to, I mean, you can't.
Pardon me? Yeah, I think it would be good to have a motion, so if you'd motion that, Doug, to change that policy?
Yeah, the motion would be to allow the, to change the existing policy where the building clerk or the city, and the city administrator may authorize requests up to $100. To change that to up to $300, anything exceeding $300 has to go to committee and then come to full council.
Okay. Motion by Flornoy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Thank you. All right. Anything else, Doug?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Katie, ambulance report.
Ambulance committee met on 6/15, so on June 15th. Our last few meetings have been pretty highly attended and rather full of debate. The county representative on the group, as well as myself, have requested, our renegotiation period for our ambulatory contract is coming up in September of this year, and we've requested four specific points for consideration by, to be added to the contract. There is a conflict of dates within the contract that needs to be adjusted. We've requested some sort of equipment report regarding functionality and making sure equipment is up to standards. Somehow incorporating into the reports that we're currently getting on a quarterly basis, staffing numbers. And then it was also brought up to address quality assurance, some QA concerns, although I don't know that that's going to make it into the official request, because it was addressed during the meeting that there is a group of people currently meeting to discuss specifically QA. So, we have put those...
Within the company?
I'm sorry?
People within the company that are...
Quality assurance on not only just the ambulance, but how are they interacting with our EMS, our police, our sheriff, our hospital? But there is an entirely separate committee of people doing that.
Can you give the council the background on the contract that we're in right now, and who are the other members on your ambulance committee?
The ambulance agency is comprised of one city official, one county official, and one hospital representative. As far as I understand, this was an appointed position from the city side of things, and I believe also on the counties. Our contract, I believe, dates back, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, until 2013.
Yeah, I was thinking it was about a three-year contract, right?
Yeah, 2013. This year happens to be the year that it goes up for reconsideration. Not renewal, just reconsideration. So, we saw that date coming, and Becky Schmitz, who is our county representative, presented a request to open the contract for renegotiation.
Okay. And speak to a couple of those issues that are not in the contract right now, and in your discussions, what are the, what is the feedback or concerns you're getting from the ambulance company, particularly the disclosure about staffing?
Okay, so, I mean, the conflicting dates is very obvious. I mean, there are dates, and there are that conflict. So, the equipment reports, that was specifically requested by me. The concern is that there is equipment on the rigs that is either not functioning up to standards or not functioning at all, and we were hoping to get, that they are held to a standard at a state level where they are checked every two years. We're just asking for a report in between those checks that the equipment is functioning and is up to standard. The staffing numbers, I may need to turn to John Morrissey for this. There's kind of, there was two requests made. One, you may have to help me here, one that they're going to try to write in about are that the levels, so EMT versus paramedic of staffing, are they in line with the, the contract? And then the other question brought before the ambulance owners are, are our staffing numbers where they need to be? Did I get that right? Is that what you guys are working on, right?
You did, and part of the problem is the owners are playing close to the vest as far as their contention that they're a private corporation, do not have to disclose these things as far as the actual staffing, because it gets into issues about shifts. They are, as an employer and a corporation, entitled to set their hours and so forth. Katie posed a very good question, though, as far as how do we know that somebody hasn't been working for 24 hours or so when they come to try to administer in an emergency? Is that the person you want to have working? The people that were in management for the ambulance service said, well, we understand that would be a concern, but when they were... that would be a concern, but when they were sort of pressed as far as do you have those kinds of shift situations, they said, well, we're not required to disclose what our shift circumstances are, just be assured we're trying to have some balance. We didn't get a specific answer, the way I recall it, so...
But it's not required by law, and that's what they...
No, it's not required by law, but I think that...
Or by contract.
Or by contract, and that's what they...
The overseeing agency has a right to ask the question, nevertheless.
Right.
So are you trying to put that in the contract for next time?
Well, right now, we, Becky has turned it over to, is it Pat?
Pat McAvan.
And I've turned it over to John to come up with the legalese to accomplish, as best we can, the request we've made of the ambulance committee.
Right.
Or ambulance owners, sorry.
We had a similar experience back in 2001 with an entirely different ambulance service as far as trying to get more information on certain things. I think back then it was more financial related to the subsidy, but...
The goal will be that...
You can ask.
Yeah, you and Pat, that Mr. Morrissey and Pat McAvan will get something back to Becky and myself prior to our next meeting, which is in August, so we, as a council, can see the contract before it goes back to the agency, and then the supervisors can also review it.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, there's a secondary group that is kind of formed out of the concerns that have been brought before the ambulance committee. I believe it was the prompting of Chief Thomas. That was kind of like a communications group. You know, we're having a lot of communications, ambulances are ending up at wrong addresses. How can we remedy how everybody talks to each other? It's very eye-opening as a citizen to find out, you know, our police equipment can't speak to our ambulance equipment because of legal things. So the ambulance company has agreed to open up their communication, GPS something, and they're working with our police department, and I believe it's in IT now. It's, as Chief Thomas said, it's way above his pay grade. So we have turned that over to the IT departments to try to get everybody's equipment speaking to each other.
And Katie, do you, do you get the sense that Midwest, our current provider, is working towards meeting our new contract language, that they want to continue their contract here?
I most definitely think they want to continue their contract. I do not believe that they're, that if we get any of these, we'll be moving in a forward direction.
Okay. That's fine. It's just with such a close period of time, obviously, as a community, we don't want to be without an ambulance service, so we want to make sure that everybody's negotiating in good faith to approve this and not walk away from negotiations.
No, I think everybody has that desire to make sure we have service.
Okay, all right.
The last thing we want is to not have service. We just want to make sure that we're getting the service that we're obligated to get.
Okay, very good. Well, I appreciate your report and you representing the council, but I think it would be good for the council to look at the contract and give Katie their full support of what is proposed. Any other questions?
I would just, John, have you guys had a chance to start drafting that language?
Have, yeah, I've got two or three pages of notes from what you and I talked about. That's part of this.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Our administrative and department reports, we were tabling the first item as Mike had brought up earlier, so could we have a project update? Melanie?
The good news about being last is David's already closed his notebook, so he can direct quotes. He's got this record.
Give him something juicy, he'll open it up.
No, nope. I have good news on step one, that we have rule development, rule development concurrence on those contracts. So the fully executed contracts went to S.M. Hentges Friday. They should have had them today, so that is good. We'll schedule a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks and give them the notice to proceed here soon. So we, last I heard, they are also looking at starting in August rather than September, so we'll be seeing stuff move on that shortly. I don't think it got attached to your agenda, so when she attaches it later, please let me know if you have any questions. A lot of last year's projects I will be bringing to you either at your next council meeting or the one following to accept those. We have grass growing in a majority of them, so I think I've got about, I've got at least four projects from last year that we haven't accepted as final that we'll be wrapping up shortly. And then on Fillmore and Liberty Drive, last council meeting you approved a bid to, or from, GNR Miller to do that water main replacement. We held a pre-construction meeting today, and the contractor intends to start on Wednesday. I believe you'll see the locates out there, but that work is from, or on Fillmore from 6th to 7th, and then on Liberty Drive from Fillmore to Little Fawn. So all we got.
Hold, stay right there. Facade report. I see, I read that there's no expected start date. I am very nervous about that, and that's not on you, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to schedule a phone call with the architect and the contractor, you and I and Mike, because I see this one slipping away, unless there's something going on that I'm not aware of. It just, the last six months have not been, not been very encouraging for the relationship between the architect and the contractor and them getting started.
One item that the architect is waiting on is decision from the Elks as far as their level of inputs, and that's been on my to-do list for a couple of weeks to call the Elks. So that part is me, but we can certainly talk with, talk with the architect.
It's one of eight projects, and they know they're going to be doing something. They should still be working with the contractor, so let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Melanie, I appreciate it. Mike, did you have one other item?
Yes, Mayor, just one quick item. I believe it's important to celebrate our successes. We're getting toward the end of the fiscal year. We've got two or three days left here, and if you noticed on your agenda, we've collected 98.23% of our revenue. There's 98.08% of the year it's expired. That's incredible. That's exactly where we want to be, and our expenditures are at 86.48%. So I just wanted to say thank you to department heads for taking this seriously. Thank you to their team for helping to improve our financial condition. We should cross the line with the surplus this year, which is the first time in seven years. That's outstanding news for the city, so thank you to everyone. It's a team...
Good work, Department heads, we appreciate that. That's all, Mayor. And Joy, you know, we were also looking at our general fund balance at this point in time, $1.1 million, and your feeling is that all transfers and everything has been paid, so we wait for our audited results, which should come month, month and a half. Anyway, it does, yeah, it does look good for those numbers being in our audit as well, so good work to everybody. Thank you, Mike, for bringing that to our attention for all your good work. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Meeting adjourned.